Okay, it is four o'clock and I will call the September 14th Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would first ask staff for confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges. Commissioner Ryan.
Okay. If those are who, that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no regime, and just as one.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of awards and proclamations. 3.1.
Item 3.1, the month of September 2020 is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Bryce Doonan will read the proclamation.
Proclamation for National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas childhood cancer remains the number-one disease killer of children, more than genetic anomalies, cystic fibrosis, and AIDS combined, and whereas on average treatment for childhood cancer is two years and can cause serious side effects that may last a lifetime, and whereas every year more than 15,700 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer, that is about 43 children each day, and whereas childhood cancer occurs regularly, randomly, and spares no socionomic class, geographic affiliation, gender or ethnic group, and whereas 60% of children who survive cancer suffer late effects such as infertility, heart failure, and secondary cancers, and whereas every year over 2,500 children under that age of 20 lose their lives to cancer, that is equivalent to seven children every single day, and whereas when a child is diagnosed with cancer, the entire family is forever affected. Therefore, in recognition of support in the patients, families, and professionals leading the fight against childhood cancer, I, Michael A. Hipock, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Salina and recognize the gold ribbon as the symbol of childhood cancer. I encourage all citizens to honor these young people who have lost their lives to this devastating disease and join the fight against childhood cancer in Salina. And witness wherefore, whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 14th day of September 2020.
Thank you, Bryce, and very nice job.
I'm Heidi Feierherm Smith. I'm the founder of the Love Chloe Foundation. We're a local nonprofit that helps families when they have children diagnosed with cancer. We also fund groundbreaking research to help find a cure. Bryce was diagnosed in December of 2019, and he has finished his treatment and is in remission right now. So, we love to hear the stories and know about families that have a positive outcome. So, we honor Bryce during the month of September. We do have a couple of events coming up in September. We have our Gold Ribbon Golf and our Gold Ribbon Virtual Gala. So, due to the pandemic, we've had to go virtual with our gala, but we're going to make the best of it. And so, anyone can join us. There's information on our website at lovechloe.org/gala. And our golf tournament, we filled up our 1:00 tee time, so we've got some, we opened up a second tee time for that, for 8:00 a.m., so we do have some openings still for early golf. So, we invite everyone to join us in recognition of these events. Thank you.
Any other events, or is that your primary one you have going on this year?
That is the primary event, yes.
And you guys do a wonderful job with that, and thank you. So, Bryce, would you come forward? I have the proclamation you read I'd like to hand to you.
Glad to hear. Everything's going well. And if you can't shake hands, we'll just give a high five up there like that. How's that? Thank you.
[applause]
Thank you.
Okay, that leads us to 3.2.
Item 3.2, the month of September 15 through October 15, 2020, is Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Salina. Maritza Rodriguez will read the proclamation.
Hello, my name is Maritza Rodriguez. I am a senior social work student at K-State Polytechnic. I am, just found out that I am part of the Commission Board for Human Services, so I'm so excited for that. I am an Ecuadorian descendant of a woman who came here in 1966 with $20 to her name from South America, so I am very excited to be reading this proclamation. Proclamation, whereas our nation has drawn strength from the diversity of our people and Hispanics have helped carry forward our legacy, as a vibrant beacon of opportunity for all, the Hispanic-American community is a collage of distinct groups, including people with roots in Central and South America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Spain. They represent many countries and cultures, each adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to our country's story. And, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins each year on September 15, the anniversary of independence of five Latin countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, with other Latin countries also celebrating their independence during this period, Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, whereas Hispanics, lasting achievements and devotion to our nation exemplifying the tenacity and perseverance embedded in our national character. They are the writers, singers, and musicians that enrich our arts and humanities. They are the innovative entrepreneurs steering our economy. They are the scientists and engineers revolutionizing our way of life and making sweeping new discoveries. They are the brave men and women in uniform who commit themselves to defending our most cherished ideals at home and abroad, and the advocates leading the way for social and political change. And whereas our nation's remarkable story began with immigration, it is imperative to embrace our diverse history so that all adults and children can see themselves in our nation's past and know that they have a crucial role to play in its future. Hispanic men and women have distinguished themselves in every endeavor, and with our cultural and linguistics ties to our trading partners throughout the Western Hemisphere, Hispanic Americans are crucial to maintaining our nation's competitiveness and prosperity in the global economy of the 21st century. And, whereas we reflect on the countless ways in which Hispanics have contributed to our nation's success, let us reaffirm our commitment to expanding opportunity and building an ever-brieter future for all. Let us embrace the diversity that strengthens us and continue striving to ensure the American dream is within reach of generations of Hispanics to come. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, have authorized and issued proclamation designating September 15 through October 15, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and I call upon all citizens of the City of Salina to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and program. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 14th day of September 2020. Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any special events scheduled over the next?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I have a proclamation, and I would like to thank you for sharing your personal story, and also thank you for volunteering to serve on one of our city boards.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will have citizens' forum. This is an opportunity for individuals to come forth if they have something they would like to bring before the commission that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
My name is Martha Oaks, and I live at 2706 Deborah Drive. Unbeknownst to him, I am here today to thank our Deputy City Manager, Major Jacob Wood, for his military service to our country. As a quilter, I chose to honor you by making a quilt. This quilt is registered with an organization called Quilts of Valor, which in its 17 years of existence has awarded over 250,000 quilts to active and retired military personnel. The mission of the Quilts of Valor organization is to cover service members and veterans touched by war with comforting and healing quilts of valor. The meaning behind the three layers in a quilt is as follows. The top of the quilt represents the communities and the many individuals we are. The batting or filler in the center of the quilt represents our hope that this quilt will bring warmth, comfort, and peace to all individuals who receive it. The backing is the strength that supports the other layers. It represents the strength of the recipient, the support of his or her family, our communities, and our nation. The stitches that hold the layers together represents the gratitude of the maker. Jacob entered the military in April of 2004 and has served in Iraq and Afghanistan. We are pleased to be here to present a quilt of valor to Major Jacob Wood in recognition of his military service both at home and abroad. It is my profound hope, Jacob, that this quilt will serve to remind you and others that your sacrifices has not been forgotten, and may it bring you peace and comfort for years to come. Jacob, thank you for your service.
Wow, you're estimating your speaking.
Do you want to take a photo with it?
Let's get.
Let's talk about the family.
Let's get your family in there too.
Yeah, so we'll hold it, and then Jacob, you could get, you want to do the miracle one?
As they line up, we want to.
Mr. Franz, we can't see you.
There you go.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, got it.
I know we're here to thank Jacob for his service, but let's not forget the family. I know his wife, and as you see, their wonderful four children have to do without their dad while he's on deployment. So, again, we want to thank Jacqueline, you, and for all your sacrifices also. So, thank you. Okay, any other surprises? Do we have anyone else? Anyone else want to come up and address this under Citizens Forum?
Hi, Deborah Corrales. I've given you guys some pamphlets there, but I came across in the veterinarian journal dated November 15, shelter staff and veterinarians are routinely made suggestive dog breed identification based on appearance, but their accuracy regarding pit bull type breeds is unknown. The purpose of this study was to measure agreement among shelter staff in assigning pit bull type breed designation to shelter dogs. There were four different shelters, 16 different assessors, and 120 dogs. Blood was drawn to DNA the dogs. 25 came back as pit bull type dogs. Using visual identification only, 62 of the dogs were identified as pit bull type when there was only 25. I'm not going to read the entire thing, it's 200 pages. The highlights were animal shelter staff and veterinarians were frequently expected to guess, key word, guess, the breed of dogs based on appearance alone. Even when observing the same dogs at the same time, shelter staff had only moderate agreement with breed designations. One in five dogs genetically identified with pit bull heritage breeds were missed by all shelter staff. One in three dogs lacking DNA for pit bull heritage breeds were labeled pit bull type dogs by at least one staff member. Lack of consistency among shelter staff indicates that visual identification of pit bull type dogs is unreliable. So, I say we need to stop judging dogs or books by their cover. On the inside of this, you'll see pictures of dogs. Each one of these is half of a pit bull type dog, even the Chihuahua. So, none of these dogs would be considered a pit bull because they don't look like one, but if, as the city believes that all pit bulls are genetically trained to kill, these dogs are just as dangerous. So, I think that when any dog is identified in the city as a pit bull by an animal shelter employee, it needs to be DNAed. DNA now is 95 to 99% accurate. None of these dogs look pit bull, but they're all half pit bull. And the back page is my own personal story of my dog when she was taken. In August of 2014, I moved to Texas. Six days after I left, my legal pit bull peanut passed away. It's very emotional for me, so I'd rather not go into it here and now, but if any of you would like to hear my story of my other dog being taken when I was forced to return to Salina, I would be more than happy to discuss it with you.
Thank you.
Dalton McDowell, 514 South 9th. Can you, can the commission set a hearing date for the resolution to end this mask rule, ruling in the next two months, so before December at some point?
Can't guarantee anything at this point. Thank you. Do we have anyone else to come before?
Yes, I'm Ken Ritz from 1314 Parkwood. I just had something that I was, since this meeting's watched by a lot of folks, and this is something that the Recreation Commission, in fact, I've been working with them on this, the concern that seems to be growing for the behavior of, I think especially dads at their kids' games, to get a little too wound up and directed at their children, but also at coaches and referees to where now it's difficult to field some sports because of the shortage of these folks that are so essential, of course, coaches and officials. So, anyway, I read an article in the journal, some fallback, some of the language that was used, I thought, well, perhaps when people are leery of, and I know I was, if someone was getting out of line of talking to them directly, that perhaps using the old cheer sign where, and of course, we don't want to cheer aloud now because that broadcasts, I guess, cheer aloud at somebody you don't like if you're carrying the virus. But anyway, to do that, and then it flips over to kind of indicate, maybe this could be directed by, you know, towards those who are getting a little too excited to, maybe it would do some good, and it wouldn't seem to be able to do any harm, and it kind of lays the groundwork then for a coach or someone to feel that they might be able to speak with the party that has gone over the top. And these I just had made up here locally. I've worked, been very helpful with Consolidated and Salina Blue. And that's just the basic one. If you're from south, Salina Blue will do them in colors, same cost as in black and white, so team colors or whatever. And Mr. Shealy with Parks and Rec felt that this would be something that they could offer teams. And I have no business interest in this, it was just something I thought, well, maybe it would help. So, if there are folks who are involved with teams, they can check with either of those firms, change the wording, do anything you want, and they're welcome to use this, have this on hand, they're welcome to use it, and it would be just between you and whoever, their other sign shops and what have you. You're just more than welcome to do that if it'll help.
Thank you.
That's all there was.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Yeah. My name is Eddie Charaumont, and I'm a resident at Salina. As I understand it, you will be having a study session on the 21st of September to talk about what to do with the Salina Police Advisory Board and the Salina Police Department's access to the 1033 program. I'm here today to express my views on these subjects. A tremendous amount of trust and power has been placed at the hand of the police. This can clearly be seen by the fact that the police are legally allowed to arrest, stop, and use force if they deem it necessary. When public servants have this much power, it is important that we also have a way to verify that our trust is not misplaced. We, the people, have given the police their power, but we are also subject to that power. Therefore, we should make sure that the power we have given is being used in the way that we approve. To do this, we need effective oversight, part of which means we need to know what kind of training and weapon the police are acquiring, because at the end of the day, we are going to be the one affected by their actions. According to Chief Nelson, the SPD has acquired in the past M16 rifles, grenade launchers, and the APC through the 1033 program. Only the APC is still at the department today. My question is, why? Why are the M16 rifles and grenade launchers necessary for the police to do their jobs? After all, if a chief is acquiring weapons, I'm assuming it is because the police deemed it necessary to do their job. Yet, to my knowledge, we haven't replaced any of those that we sent back. Now, I know that our current chief wasn't the one that acquired these weapons, but it begs the question, should we, the people, be at the mercy of whatever chief happens to be in power? Should the chief, should a chief be able to get whatever weapons he or she deems necessary? Or should we, the people, play a role in how we are being policed? If we get to play a role, then why is there a loophole that allows SPD to go behind the people's back and acquire weapons without telling us beforehand? It is my belief that if the SPD wants to adopt a new type of weapon or training, they should explain to the people why they need that weapon and what it will be used for. In other words, they should make the case for why that weapon is necessary. I also believe that if the people believe that the new weapon is necessary, they should be willing to spend the money to acquire that weapon for the police. At our public forum, the chief mentioned something about community policing. I'm not going to debate here whether that's the best way to reduce crime or not, but you can't say that you want community policing and not be willing to trust that the public will give you the support you need if you make your case to them. You can't talk about community policing and not be willing to engage the public just because they might say no. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Max Welbrock-Tally. I live at 514 South 9th Street. For the past several weeks, I have eagerly awaited the upcoming study session on the 21st of September geared toward resolving some of the issues brought to mind by the Sunflower Coalition in past commission meetings. Since their policy proposal, I've heard much conversation surrounding different specific recommendations. Much of that, whether in favor or against, is well reasoned and deserves consideration. Some, however, is not. In particular, I've heard much attempting to defend the continued unsupervised use of the 1033 program as a means to deliver needed resources to the Salina Police Department without burdening the taxpayers of Salina. I think this line of thinking, while perhaps fiscally sound, fundamentally avoids the nature of the relationship between government and governed, as well as the responsibilities of each in our democratic system. Our police department hasn't existed since time immemorial. It was created when citizens believed that such a department was necessary to maintain order and uphold the law. Implicit within that is some vision of public safety, one to which we've all passively agreed and one which we affirm continually in the commissioners we elect, the police chiefs they ultimately hire, and the real material burden we are willing to bear in order to achieve that vision. What's important here to me is the responsibility of bearing that burden. Policing is a tough job, and often what we want out of it is vague and inarticulate. Officers do more than many of us even imagine trying to serve those desires, placing their lives and well-being on the line in order to do so. In the face of such service, we cannot reasonably divorce ourselves from our role in this process. We are responsible for clarifying our public safety goals and providing the material resources to meet them. If our SPD requires additional tools, training, or resources to meet those goals safely, we are obliged to provide those resources through the taxes we agree to pay. If we are unwilling to pay a higher price, then we must reassess what we want our SPD to do. As a community, we both provide for and are provided for by our relationship with the SPD, and it is irresponsible to demand so much and provide so little. Reliance on private donations through the Excellence Fund or on acquisitions through the 1033 program without sufficient public oversight merely enables us to avoid our civic duty. Through these means, we pass the burden of guiding and providing for our SPD to private and federal actors, leaving ourselves out of the process. This removes the role of the average citizen from the goal of community policing, setting the police to fend for themselves out of fear of offending our collective pocketbooks. If their service is so essential to us, and they require new high-tech simulators or armored personnel carriers to perform the duties we've given to them, we should be more than willing to pay our dues or else to lighten their burden. As the commission considers staff suggestions next week and beyond, I ask that you consider the issue as deeply as possible. I do not believe it is in our interest as Salinians to neglect our duty to our city departments merely because we are tax-averse. We should be as involved as possible in establishing at least minimal oversight for the use of federal surplus logistics programs ensures that we all continue to be the stakeholders we ought to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to come before the commission under Citizens Forum? Okay, if not, we will move to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. Item 5.1.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on Naming Municipal Facility 5.1A, Resolution Number 20-7871. Item 5.1, Public Hearing on Naming Municipal Facility 5.1A, Resolution Number 20-7871, renaming the East Crawford Recreation Area the Berkeley Family Recreational Area.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick, members of the Commission. He is item today, Mr. Hold a Public Hearing as required by Step 4 of the City of Solana Municipal Facility Naming Guidelines and Adopt Resolution 20-7871 in accordance with Step 4 and Step 5 of the naming initiative, and declare that the East Crawford Recreation Area be renamed the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. The public notice for this, for the Park Board meeting on the matter was published August 21st, 2020, and the Park Board meeting was held on August 28th, 2020. The public hearing notice for today's initiative was published on September 4th, 2020. Step 1 was approved through Resolution 20-7851 at the July 27th, 2020 meeting. Step 2, the city clerk verified compliance with the naming initiative. Step 3, as mentioned before, was taken on August 28th, 2020 through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who voted 5-0 to move this forward to the City Commission for consideration. Step 4, which we're having today, is the public hearing. And also, combined with that is Step 5. This is the approval by the City Commission of the Sign Design and Funding Plan and Use of Staff Resources for the Project. Due to time constraints, we wanted to go ahead and put the sign initiative before you as well. Per Section 5 of Resolution 17-7481, amendments or variances may be considered from time to time by the City Commission as deemed necessary to best meet the public interest. Such actions may be formal amendments to the guidelines or case-by-case variance approved by the City Commission. Byron Tomlinson is here to make some comments on, on the naming rights, and then we'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners Byron Tomlin, Board Member, Solana Baseball Enterprises. As you're aware, we've been in front of you before with our project of restoring and renovating Dean Evans. We also have an additional project on the USD 305 grounds as re-establishing some softball because of the altering we had to do with the virus in our initial big project. And I won't go into a lot of the history of that, but I'm sure that you're aware of the processes that we have been through. Along this process to accomplish this objective was our fundraising so we could contribute and fully fund both of these projects. And I'm here before you today as a member of Solana Baseball Enterprises Board, a local 501-3C charitable organization, to nominate the Berkeley family as the naming rights to replace East Crawford Recreation Area with the official name Berkeley Family Recreation Area. Now, yes, they've been very generous in their lead donation to allow us to accomplish this, and that's very much noted and appreciated, along with an additional donation to the softball complex, just for your information, too. And that's important, and we are very appreciative of them giving back to the community with that donation. The family has also been involved through decades to this community. As you know, they're a banking family that's been involved with the Bennington State Bank, Bank of Tuscaloosa, State Bank of Downs, and Solutions North Bank. And all of these shareholders and banks have contributed with this family donation. And again, we're very appreciative of the way they've given back. Not only have they been donors in the baseball community and the softball community, but they've helped community art, 4H with the youth down through the years, the zoo, the United Way, Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And so this was among the criteria that our board looked for in asking them to consider this donation, not just this project, but a history of community involvement. And that's why we're so proud that they accepted our request to get involved with our project. And certainly, they've provided the lead donation that our project couldn't go forward without their generosity. And I think they have, again, a history of giving back to the community. Solana has a history of certainly acknowledging the philanthropic families. You have examples of that all across Solana. The Graves Family Sports Complex, Gene Bissell Field, Dean Evans Stadium, Roger Wilberfield, James Matson Field, Donovan Air Children's Center, the Stiefel Theater, multiple examples of families that have been acknowledged of giving back to this community. And I think that's one of the strengths of Solana, is we do have a lot of private partnerships. And, and that's not common to every community, and that's what we're, we're very much proud of. So in donating to this complex, again, I would like to acknowledge the Berkeley family and their giving back to the community, and certainly represent that today with our request to change the name of East Crawford Recreation Area to the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. We, as our baseball board, are honored to make that request in behalf of the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Byron. Chris, is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
I'm not sure. I was only anticipating Byron. I would like to add that the Berkeley family also donated to the Field House. Court III is named after their family as well.
Do we have any questions for staff? I do have one quick question. It's talked about approving the signs. I don't know if I saw that in the resolution. Do we need to do something to approve that, Chris?
I don't believe we had a resolution for the last sign. I don't recall that we've approved signs by resolution, just.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because he, he mentioned that when he was addressing us.
Well, we've kind of combined Step 4 and 5, so if you're, if you're comfortable with the signage and the naming. And, and I would note that the, the signage is consistent with our wayfinding signage we, we have throughout town. So just trying to carry that forward.
I presume that the signs are all really the same size. They're just different scales on, on the drawings we were submitted.
The, Byron has let me know that the family would like to add monument signs similar to what we have at, I would say, Jerry Ivy Park. Staff has not investigated those costs yet, but we have investigated reskining the existing signs.
If I may, too, if they're, you know, I know that those city signs you have across town have a theme, and, and that's fine. We were thinking about doing, you know, like, they have right now that wooden sign on East Crawford Recreation Area that's really not a part of that. And we would, you know, like to look at the opportunity of doing some, some signs at the south and north entrance. Of course, we would pay for all that, that we would not ask the city to do that. We understand you would have some changes on your signs that are of the same theme. And, and we would make every attempt to stay within a theme, but on those additional signs, we would be happy to endure the entire cost of that.
Okay. I thank you for the additional information, but my question was, we have two pages with sign layouts. I presume that all of those signs will be the same size and that the two pages are simply different scales.
The called-out dimensions on those pages are the same, and they just.
Okay. And my, my issue is on the small page, I can't quite make them out to see if they are, in fact, the same dimensions.
Yep. The called dimensions are all the same.
We will simply reskin the existing signs that are there.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission. And before anybody makes a motion, I would like to make a couple of comments. Solana is blessed to have multiple families that have contributed over, over time to make Solana what it is. I probably am one of those that's most fortunate that I've gotten to work not only for the Berkeley family, but with the Berkeley family for over 20 years. And as a business owner, I, I attribute a lot of what I do with my business and giving back the community to the Berkeley family. I think they lead by example, and I see a lot of them out there. And to each and every one of you, I'd like to thank you for, for your leadership, not only in what you give to the community dollar-wise, but also through what you do, just by showing what's right to do in a community. And again, I thank you for that, so.
Mayor Hoppick, the city clerk just pointed out to me, you did call for public comment, but you have not technically opened the public hearing, called for it and closed it. So if you could do that, that'll check that box.
Forgot we were doing public hearings, so sorry about that. Okay. We asked for public hearing, there, there was none, so we will close that at this time. And again, we will read Resolution 5.1A.
5.1A, Resolution Number 20-7871, renaming the East Crawford Recreation Area the Berkeley Family Recreational Area.
We've already gone through the blue sheet, so any other comments by Commissioners?
Yep.
If not, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm humbled and very proud to recommend approval of Resolution Number 20-7871, renaming the East Crawford Recreation Area the Berkeley Family Recreational Area.
I will second that.
We have a motion as second to approve Resolution Number 20-7871. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes three to zero. So thank you very much to the Berkeley family. That will move us on to 6.1, or to the consent agenda, I should say.
Item 6.1, approve the regular meeting minutes of August 24th, 2020. Item 6.2, approve the joint meeting minutes of September 8th, 2020. And Item 6.3, approve Resolution Number 20-7861, setting October 19th, 2020 as the public hearing date for the dangerous structure located at 120 South Penn Avenue.
I move, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Item 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes three, zero. That leads us to administration.
Item 7.1, approval for replacement of one police and one fire vehicle.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Kevin Morris Fire Chief. I'm here today to request approval to replace and equip two city vehicles with insurance settlements and sub-CIP funds. On June 16th of this year, a vehicle collision at the intersection of Columbia and Ash occurred between a Solana Fire Department medical officer vehicle and a Solana Police Department patrolman's Ford Explorer. Fortunately, no injuries were involved. However, both vehicles were deemed a total loss, and the details of the accident are in your, in your blue sheet. Vehicles involved, the Solana Fire Department was unit 440, a white 2018 Chevy Suburban with 38,752 miles. The insurance settlement was $37,184. This vehicle was purchased new in 2018 for $49,154. The Solana Police Department vehicle was unit 933, a black 2017 Ford Explorer with 57,139 miles. City insurance settlement was $17,173 for that, and 50 cents, excuse me, for that vehicle. City's risk manager coordinated the processing of both vehicle claims through Traveler's Insurance, and settlements were reached. And on the second page of the blue sheet, you can see a table in the middle there that indicates what the insurance settlement was and the difference needed today. Police Department wishes to replace its vehicle with a 2021 Ford Explorer and has reached an agreement with Long MacArthur for $34,401.14. The Police Department vehicle will also require installation of additional equipment in the sum of $9,845.48 from KCOM, for a total of $44,246.62. Minus insurance settlement, this would require $27,073.12 from the 2020 Sub-CIP Vehicle Equipment Fund. Fire Department wishes to replace its vehicle with a late-model pre-owned Chevy Suburban that will accommodate its equipment, such as heart monitor, defibrillators, auto pulse, and still be heavy enough to pull a mass casualty trailer if needed. This requires a custom-built equipment storage in the rear of this. The Chevy, the Chevy Suburban has worked extremely well for the department in this role, and the Solana Fire Department is in the process of locating such a vehicle at this time. Minus the insurance settlement, this would require $18,533.76 from the 2020 Sub-CIP Vehicle Equipment Fund. And the, since we haven't located one, the price we estimated with various vendors would not exceed $45,000 for that pre-owned vehicle. Finance Director Debbie Pack has indicated there are sufficient funds in the sales tax capital, capital fund, excuse me, to cover both vehicle replacement costs that exceed their respective insurance settlements. I gladly be, I would, would be glad to answer any questions before I move on to the recommended action. And Deputy Chief Sean Morton from the Police Department is here, if you had any questions for him.
Any questions from either? I had one quick question, and I think you maybe, you stated on the, the one for the Fire Department, we're, we're going with the Chevy Suburban.
Yes, sir.
There's a, there is a necessity to have that larger vehicle?
Yes, we found that that's even, something like a Tahoe is still a pretty good size, but that we'd carry a lot of equipment. That vehicle goes throughout the entire county and can, at times, be requested to, to actually haul something, such as a trailer. We found that that's the best fit for this department.
Okay. Only reason I was asking is there's a significant price difference between, like, an Explorer and a Suburban, and didn't know if that was.
Well, it has to do with the, the amount of equipment we carry in the back. It's pretty substantial.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Staff has identified the following options for the City Commission's consideration. Number one, approve the purchase of one Ford Explorer from Long MacArthur in the amount of $34,401.14, and approve $9,845.48 for KCOM to outfit the vehicle with necessary add-on equipment. Part number one also is approve the purchase of one pre-owned Chevy Suburban LT-1500 in the amount not to exceed $45,000, and approve $10,717.76 for superior emergency response vehicles for the installation of its required ancillary equipment. Number two, approve the purchase of both public safety vehicles with modifications as the City Commission deems appropriate. Number three, postpone consideration of the purchase of the public safety vehicles to a specific time and date and provide staff with additional information needed to proceed. Or number four, do not approve the purchase of the public safety vehicles resulting in both departments operating with one less vehicle for their day-to-day operations. Staff recommends number one.
Any other question, questions?
You know, I, I, I think I probably know the answer to this question, but we are reusing the ancillary equipment that we can. That, that always kind of, having to spend an extra $10,000 on a vehicle after you've purchased the vehicle just kind of, you know, causes me some concern.
We are doing the best we can. In the Fire Department's case, that cabinet that houses all the equipment in the rear is custom-built for our equipment, specific and so forth. And the other issue was, there was substantial damage due to the collision, fortunately, of the ancillary equipment.
So basically, it has to be replaced.
Cannibalized as much as we could still use, yes, sir.
As a result of the.
Yes.
Accident. Okay.
Okay. Is there any comment from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I move, we approve the purchase of one Ford Explorer from Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of $34,401.14, and approve $9,845.48 for KCOM to outfit the vehicle with the necessary add-on equipment, and approve the purchase of one pre-owned Chevrolet Suburban LT-1500 in the amount not to exceed $45,000, and approve $10,717.76 for superior emergency response vehicles for the installation of required ancillary equipment.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion as second to approve the purchase of one vehicle from Long MacArthur with the additional equipment added on, and one Chevy Suburban to be purchased, not to exceed $45,000 plus ancillary equipment also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes three, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that will take us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 20-7874, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated loan agreement with the Community Housing Development Corporation of Central Kansas relating to a loan agreement entered into with the Lee Loft Partners LLC.
Okay, Mr. Schrag.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today's study session was a tour of the Lee Building Phase One redevelopment, and which is the culmination of that project that, I'm not sure I can tell you how many years that has been in the conversation, the community's conversation. As you, I think, already know, we've had conversations with multiple developers that indicated interest over a number of years, and, and ultimately, Lee Loft Partners was formed, it was a partnership of a couple of experienced developers, and approached the city commission about a couple of things in terms of ways that the city could support the project. So, back in February of 2018, you consider, you as the city commission considered two requests. One was a resolution of support for their application for low-income housing tax credit funding from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. The second was a request for a city contribution of $500,000 of GAAP financing to make the project financially feasible. So, a resolution was passed indicating support for the low-income housing tax credit application, and that went on that same date, and that was ultimately approved by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, which then moved our conversation to the next stage, which was the $500,000 GAAP funding request. And so, on, by way of Resolution 190164, on June 10th of, of 2019, we entered into an agreement, a loan agreement with Lee Loft Partners for a loan not to exceed $500,000, which was unanimously approved by the city commission on that date. The staff report provides a considerable amount of detail. You may recall that we had quite a bit of conversation about the, the allocation of, of units, and market, our desire and our interest in, in providing funding was to assist in getting market-rate apartments built in the community. That had not occurred in, in decades. And so, part of that, that information that's provided as part of the staff report walks you through the deliberations that went on over multiple meetings about the distribution of those units. The other thing that I would note was, at that time, the request was described as a $500,000 forgivable loan, with the terms to be finalized in, in a development agreement. It was subsequently clarified that the $500,000 contribution was, was associated with proposed market rate numbers in the first phase only, and the ultimate action item presented to the commission was that loan agreement that, that I mentioned. The entire project at the time was described as Phase One costing approximately $12 million. Phases Two and Three, approximately $17 million, for a total project cost in the range of $28 million. At the time, Vice Mayor Davis asked for clarification about the, the nature of the forgivable loan, and an explanation was provided that upon completion of Phase One, as described in terms of the numbers of units, and market rate units, and quality of finish, the developer then would have the opportunity to request that that loan be forgiven, and that they probably wouldn't be, that term would probably not be in the document in and of itself, but they were willing to put clawbacks in and assurances that they would, would do and produce the product that they had, they had described. So, the ultimate conclusion of the commission's deliberations at that time was a motion to authorize a development agreement and a $500,000 loan in the form of a forgivable loan in return for development of 53 apartments in Phase One, with a minimum of 33% of those apartments being market-rate apartments. And that motion was also approved unanimously. So, taking into account tax and other funding considerations, the city funds were provided in the form of a loan, providing for essentially a balloon payment at the end of that loan term, and it was acknowledged at that time that representatives of the developer indicated that they would be looking at adding a not-for-profit, such as possibly the Community Housing Development Organization, or referred to as the CHODO, as a special member, and that they might be coming back to you to request assignment of that, that forgivable loan to the CHODO. So that's where we find ourselves today. Based upon the loan format, the actual document was not a development agreement, was actually the loan agreement that's in place today. And, I've provided a summary of some of the key points of that loan agreement in the staff report as well, but suffice it to say that it's, it was a $500,000 loan, it described the property to be developed, and, and the nature of the, the details of that development and the attached exhibits. The loan would, would be advanced upon completion of the project, which we are very near that point, at this point. It'd be evidenced by a promissory note. It spelled out the interest rate and the term of the note, and, and they shall have the right to repay all or a portion in advance, and that they agree that the payment would be due under the note if, in all interest, if it was found to be in default in some form. So, at this point, the request that's before you is to amend and modify the loan agreement so that the, the developers that are called out, Lee Loft Partners, it essentially can be assigned to the, the CHODO. It would still remain a forgivable loan, and there's a provision about an affordability period also having to be honored in terms of the, the duration of the, the project. And so, the action item before you is the restatement and amendment of that loan agreement, and, and the, essentially, the assignment from Lee Loft Partners to the CHODO. I did call it in the report, particular Section 204 regarding repayment, and that it currently provides that, in the event the project is completed in accordance with the original borrower's plans and specifications approved by lender, and provided that lender is not elected to declare the loan immediately due and payable, on the occurrence of an event of default, the loan shall be forgiven upon the expiration of the affordability period. So, that is the provision that holds them accountable to developing the project as agreed upon, and then makes provision for forgiveness of, of that loan amount. So, with respect to the fiscal note, at the time of the initial promissory note was approved, it was noted that sales tax fund proceeds would be needed, and they've been budgeted ever since. So, following that preliminary action taken by the city commission, that expenditure has been shown on the sales tax fund spreadsheet and budget, and it's been carried forward in subsequent budgets ever since. With respect to options on your part, you could approve Resolution 207874, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated loan agreement with Community Housing Development Corporation of Central Kansas relating to a loan agreement entered into with Lee Loft Partners, in the principal amount of $500,000. You could postpone your consideration of that resolution and provide further guidance in terms of information that you'd like for your future consideration. You could decline to approve the resolution, thereby choosing not to amend and restate the subject loan, and, and allowing the existing loan to remain in effect. One thing that I would note with respect to the exhibit and, and the development parameters, it was mentioned in the tour today, that as they got into the project, the one, one element that's called out in the original exhibit that's not, that we would need to amend is a provision of washers and dryers in the one-bedroom apartments. They are provided in the other apartments, and there is a common laundry facility made available to the residents of, of the apartment complex, but due to the, and I'll defer to the developers to answer any questions you might have, but due to the specifics of the project, they found themselves opting not to go forward with the washer and dryer connections in the one-bedroom apartments. So, Matt Gillum's here, and Pat Beatty as well, on behalf of Lee Loft Partners. They can certainly speak to that, answer any other questions that you might have. But, staff's recommendation would be that you approve the resolution as presented, providing for that one amendment that I mentioned.
Thank you. Well, thank you guys, first and foremost, for coming out and, and viewing the project. A lot of detail's still left to be finished, but we're pretty proud of what's standing there today. You know, it's been a fourteen-half, fifteen-month construction process, historic, and, and we've kind of left every inch of the building unturned, so, we're very proud of the product that's there. It's a, a product that you all should be proud of, the community should be proud of, because it's, it's quite frankly, taken the entire community to get this done. As, as Michael mentioned, this has been something that we've had on our radar for many, many years, and I know some other developers have taken a look at as well. And it just quite frankly, was too large of a project to tackle, and the timing really lined up with the downtown revitalization, and we felt the risk parameters finally got just risky enough for us to kind of say, okay, this, this makes sense. And, I think you're seeing the payoff now. I think the building looks spectacular, it'll look even better when it's all polished up. I think it glistens at night, all those little details are kind of fun, but you're seeing them kind of unfold. But then additionally, with the, the aspect of residents moving in, we only have 18 apartments left to lease, and there's a pretty substantial interest list, so I would imagine those won't last very long here. So, we just welcomed the first residents to the community last Friday, and, and I fully expect the, the remainder of them to be in there very shortly. Again, it took a lot of people to do this, a lot of subcontractors in Salina, a lot of different other folks, but specifically, the, the CHODO here in Salina being our partner, and, and our partner being Overland Property Group and, and Flint Hills Holdings Partner. The reason for, for this interaction and, and change with the loan is, this money really should flow to the CHODO and their organization, and then the CHODO will loan that to Lee Loft Partners on behalf of, of their contribution. So, Lance or Gary, I don't know if one of you want to speak, but, but they're certainly our partners in this deal. We partnered with them before, they're, they're great individuals and, and organization to have. So, if one of you guys wants to, to talk, and then we're happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Gary Hobbie, the Director of Community Development Housing Corporation, was very excited to be on this side of the microphone, having spent seven years on the other side, so, I thank you for, the opportunity for us to talk today. I'm surrounded by several board members that, from the CHODO. Lance Cochrane happens to be our president with a legal firm here in town. We also have Kim Trigg, who is on with Next Home Realty. We have Lauren Driscoll, who's the director now of Community Development Services for the City of Salina. And we also have Andy Holtberg, who is the Ashby House Director. Each of us bring a separate idea and idea of thoughts, processes for housing and needs in the community to our board, and so, we're very pleased that we, not only in 2007, when I came here to work for the city, I met Lance Cochrane, who had just recently helped form the Salina CHODO, if you want to call it that. And we're very pleased to be able to try to work out various projects throughout the last 13 years. We have been able to work with Overland Property Group on other projects, not only in this community, but other communities in the state of Kansas, and we're working on a second project with them now in a regional community here near us. We're very, very pleased and honored to be able to work with Overland Property, and be able to be a small partner in this project. It's a great thing for us to be able to be involved in the community, and we hope we can see bigger and better things as we continue on with the housing needs in the community. We know that what you've done in the last few months with the economic development issues that are going on in the community, there's going to be several opportunities for not only Lee Holding, Lee Lofts, the Overland Property Group, but also for the Salina CHODO and other people in the community to work together to solve some of the housing needs. And I believe this is the first step in one of that process. I'm on behalf of the CHODO, we want to thank you, and we ask that you will support us with the resolution today. Lance?
I don't think I have anything to add, except to, to thank them. The, the CHODO is such a vital institution in every community, and in all the larger communities throughout, and our CHODO has really had a hard time getting off the ground. And without Pat and their group, I, or we would not be standing here today, and I think this is so important, and, and I think this is just another step in getting us forward so that our CHODO will succeed, and then, obviously, you can see the fruits of that labor. So, thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff, or Mr. Gillum, or the CHODO?
I have a few, if you don't mind. How many units are going to be market rate? The blue sheet says 21. This afternoon, we were told 20, and the agreement says 18. That seems to me like that ought to be a consistent number.
Understandable question. There was a lot of conversation going into it. The agreement ultimately says 33% should be market rate, so.
And that would be 18?
We, we have 20 market rate units in the, in the development now, and that is now locked in place forever, and when I mean forever, I mean the next 30 years. So, it's 20 units of market rate housing.
So, it's 20, 20 is the way it ends up?
33% is 17.49, so, yes, 18 units would be.
Would be the minimum, but they've gone ahead and developed 20?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, you know, I'm having a little trouble figuring out the players from the blue sheet, and it's, some of that has been clarified in the presentation and the tour this afternoon, but it's my understanding that we have Lee Loft Partners, who's kind of the lead development group.
Lee Loft Partners is the collaboration of, of all of us into one.
Okay, and, and behind that are, are the Flint Hills Holding Group, who I believe were the folks who were involved with the Lawrence Development that is somewhat similar to this.
Correct.
So they bring something valuable. And Overland Property Group, which has also, I believe, been involved in some of the local developments.
Correct.
Hawthorne.
Prairieland and Hawthorne.
Apartments, among perhaps others, and consist of a number of folks who at least have ties or roots in the Salina community. Okay. I, I just, I had a lot of trouble trying to.
Sure.
Put that together from the blue sheet.
Absolutely.
Or the request for commission action. The property taxes are still being paid by, I guess, now a former owner, the most recent tax statement?
We purchased the property from the former owner, I believe it was April or May of 2019.
Okay.
And at that point in time, we took over control of the entire complex, and so, when you develop properties like this, you fragment, you have to fragment the ownership, so that particular building is owned by Lee Loft Partners, which the CHODO is a part of, and then we still own a holding company, which, which now owns the rest of these buildings that we'll develop. But that holding company that owns the rest of the buildings is comprised of Overland Property Group and Flint Hills Holdings, so the, the owner who had owned it before that for 30 or 40 years is.
Is out of the picture.
He is no longer.
I just looked at the tax records, and I would note the taxes are current on the property, which is always a, a good thing to see. Okay. Then my last question has to do with this whole process. And as I understand it, based on the presentation so far, the money will flow from the city to CHODO, who then, and that is, in effect, a grant, and they will then loan it to the, to the, the Lee Loft Partners, and that is a forgivable loan, and if they cease to comply with the requirements relating to the portion that's market rate, and there are a few other requirements, then that loan becomes due and payable back to the CHODO? Is that the way this is structured?
No, the, the document that is in your packet, that's described as a loan and has the forgiveness provision, is between the City of Salina, and will now be between the City of Salina and the CHODO.
Right.
So, it is a forgivable loan to the CHODO, and if there's an event of default, it'll be repayable back to the city.
From the CHODO?
Correct.
Okay, what resources do they have available to pay that back, should it be necessary? And do they have a management role with respect to the facilities so that they can, that the developers, Lee Loft, can be, you know, their feet can be held to the fire should there be a, an issue? And I don't expect one. That's not been the case with Hawthorne, certainly, at this point, it's worked very well. But I'm trying to get my head around if, if this is, in effect, turns into a grant, and we're just calling it a forgivable loan at this point. I mean, is there a reason for all of these gyrations?
So, so if I can just clarify real quick, the reason for the CHODO being in the middle is, if the money were to flow to Lee Loft Partners straight, it would be a taxable event on Lee Loft Partners.
Okay.
And so therefore, instead of $500,000, that, that money is obviously quite watered down. So, the CHODO, obviously, that money flowing to them, it provides them a benefit, because they do have a loan on the books, so it, it's financially beneficial to them. They contribute it to the project. One thing that also is a benefit is, we are taking all the financial risk as Overland Property, Flint Hills Holdings, the CHODO is not personally guaranteeing any of these loans. So, we have a individual loan document with them as well, that, you know, will tie to the cities, so, they're not going to be left holding the buck if there was a default event, I guess, is, is what I would tell you.
I guess my question, unusual event, there would be a default to this agreement, and I really don't expect that. How can, how can the Lee Loft Partners be held accountable to stand behind that? Because it looks to me, just by in the structure of the, the whole thing, is, you know, after we sign this assignment, they're, you know, the accountability disappears.
Yeah, I mean, they are, you know, I'd let Mike maybe weigh in on, you know, his opinion on this, but they're a member of the, of the organization now, so they'll be a member of Lee Loft Partners. And the, the programs governed by the IRS and Kansas Al...
And the program's governed by the IRS and Kansas Housing and Resources, and an event of default would really mean that we broke the IRS rules with regard to, you know... And so all of that is sort of being governed by the IRS and Kansas Housing Resources.
Okay. That's helpful for me to know, because I just, just looking at the structure on the paper, I'm sitting there going, you know, it's, this is...
If we defaulted on this, that would mean we defaulted with, you know, with the program, and we'd have a lot bigger problems, $500,000, unfortunately. It'd be a pretty crucial blowout.
With the Kansas Housing Resource Corp. and those, do you have the thirty-three percent market rate requirement also? When you talk about default, we talk about default of payment. We also speak of default of not having the number of units per default.
Yeah, and that's primarily what my question is.
They actually would probably, if anything, want to see, you know, I mean, we signed with twenty units. I'm trying to think about this.
There's a land use restrictive agreement filed on the property, so technically, we are not allowed to break this now mold. That mold is now permanent unless the property were to physically go through bankruptcy, which at that point in time, we would be removed, or they would be coming after us personally, so...
Yeah, and the market rate, I mean, I would assume it would be to decrease the market rate would be the default, I guess, right?
Yes, that's the way I interpret it, too.
That's what I'm asking.
Again, that's all, that's in a land use restriction agreement, and that's governed, and it's, and you really, you know, there's no upside to us doing that.
And is there any annual accounting for that?
It's every two years, there's a, or two to three years, they do a file review. And then, you know, the investor will do one as soon as we're done with the lease up here, and because, you know, to look at the first year files. But, you know, again, there's no upside to us to have it more affordable. You won't get more tax credits, you won't, there's nothing in it for us to do that, so...
And I noticed they're signing a note. Do you guys also execute a mortgage on behalf of the city that gets recorded?
That's...
Okay.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner Franz, I was going to mention that possibly in response to your question also, Commissioner Franz, that there is to be the execution and recording of a mortgage. It is a recourse-only mortgage. In other words, the city's only remedy would be the mortgage interest. But it is on the property. Now, it is not a first mortgage position. It is, I can't speak exactly to where the priorities would come, but there would be, there will be a recorded mortgage against the property.
So the first priority is actually that land use restriction agreement, and then the first mortgage with Bennington State Bank, and then this would be in third position, I guess.
So as we went into this, I think, I believe the priorities were the quality of the development, and so one condition is the funds aren't released until the conditions of the development are satisfied. And you've seen it today, there's some finishing touches, but, so the funds will not be dispersed until that requirement's met, and then we're left with the market rate aspect, the commitment, which we've just discussed.
And don't take it wrong, we just ask these questions because of fiduciary reason to the city, but it is a wonderful project. I was not expecting probably what I saw. It was probably a...
Yeah, I was pleasantly surprised by the quality of the project.
And I think the fact that your leases have already taken off the way they have speaks well to the way you finished it.
You know, I think we've done fifty-some of these, and this might have been one of the more challenging, maybe the most challenging, because I was telling, you know, you guys today, the different sources of funds that had to come in, and the different things that had to happen. And, I mean, truly, without the tax abatement by the city, without the funds being loaned by the city to the Chodo, without our partnership with the Chodo, we wouldn't be able to do this. And it was, it was pretty, a little bit emotional for me this weekend, watching people move in after walking that building dozens of times, thinking, how do I put this together? How does my group put this together? And we did it.
Well, we've been fortunate to have Overland Property Group do the Hawthorne, and also the, it's been, and the other facility you've done, have all been done very well, and been an asset to the community, and so thank you for those.
And I know we've discussed this a little bit, but for the benefit of the public, I think the other point that's worth making is our lack of investment in market rate apartments, our lack of comparables for going on thirty years. And so, you know, why is it the city was interested in providing this funding? Our housing study told us we needed market rate apartments. Lenders were averse to it because the market hadn't been demonstrated in so long. This is a collaborative effort to demonstrate there is a market, so hopefully we can prime the pump for more market rate apartments in the community.
Yeah, I am personally very pleased that we are sinking some resources into something that we say is a priority for us. And I'm very pleased to hear that the market rate units have all been rented. So that does, I think, show that there is a demand for that style of housing, and that we may be able to have some further development along those lines. That's great. Like you say, it gives us a comparable and a background.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there any comments to be made by the public? If not, I will bring it back to the Commission. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question on parking.
Come up the microphone, please.
As to the provision of parking, I...
I think, would you like to answer that? I know that that's always been a concern, and...
Yeah, happy to. I think it's kind of hard. You drive down Santa Fe, but there's actually a brand-new parking lot that we've built right behind the buildings, that there's clearing some rock out of right now, and they're striping, but there's a brand-new...
Matt, you might face the microphone, or they won't be able to pick you up on there.
There's a brand-new parking lot right behind the buildings that has been constructed, concrete parking lot, that the residents have at their sole use. And then we've also created some on-street parking just to the north of the building. So we have gone out of our way to really make sure that parking is available for the residents of that community.
How many spots do you have total?
There's fifty-three spots alone in that parking lot, just in the parking lot.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is it protected parking?
It is not protected. It's open-air parking back there.
But for the residents?
Just for the residents, correct. Yes, it's not a public parking lot. It is parking only for the residents of that community.
Is there security?
There is not security back there, so, but there's, you know, new lighting structures, and it's pretty well lit, so...
Does it have a basement?
Could you come up front and state your name and address with...
My name is Reverend Dee Williamson, 635 Georgetown, Salina. Does it have a basement? I mean, this is all new to me. I wanted to go tour it, but does it have, like, safe rooms in this building? Because, I mean, we are in Tornado Alley. So where's all that at? Is that...
Come back to the microphone here, so everyone can all hear me.
But how much is it?
So the building itself, as I was kind of pointing out, you know, we've gotten a lot of comments from the public on those brick walls are going to be cold in the winter, and my comment is the brick walls are about that thick. And so those brick walls are going to be a lot, a lot better off than anybody's house in Salina unless they live in foot-and-a-half-foot-wide walled homes. So tornadoes, you know, that building is basically one big safe room, quite frankly, and the interior hallways that go throughout the corridors do not have any windows in them. So you've kind of got a built-in safe room for the entire community with how thick those walls are. There is a basement in the building. It's accessible by stairs. It's not open to the public because the elevators not get to that space. But really, that building being what it is, is, you know, it stood for, gosh, a hundred years now, so hopefully, knock on wood, a tornado doesn't center on it. But even then, I think we're confident that that building is safe for a tornado-type situation.
Would they have a rent?
So we have rents. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but they range from, I want to say, $400 to $450 a month, all the way up to, I think, $1,000 a month, $1,300 a month? Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I move we approve Resolution Number 20-7874, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated loan agreement with Community Housing Development Corporation of Central Kansas relating to a loan agreement entered into with Lee Lofts Partners LLC in the principal amount of $500,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7874.
As of one clarification, the reference to washer and dryer connections in one-bedroom units would need to be deleted to reflect the finished product.
Add that amendment, please.
Okay.
Okay by me, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second with the amendment as to the washers and dryers not being in the one-bedroom units. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 3-0. That will move us on to 7.3.
Item 7.3, authorize the city manager to authorize the Stinson Law Firm as environmental legal counsel to the Salina public entities in relation to the former Schilling Air Force Base site environmental matter.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. The former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter is in the middle of three very important concurrent post-mediation processes, which includes the Salina public entities, and that's the city, Salina Airport Authority, USD 305, and Kansas State University. The first I'll talk about is the consent decree, and it was negotiated through the mediation process that ended in January of 2020, and was approved by the Salina public entities at their joint meeting on June 24, 2020. Currently, the Department of Justice is in the review process of the consent decree. Upon execution of the consent decree from the Department of Justice, the Stinson Law Firm, who acts as the public entity's environmental counsel, will complete the necessary process to submit that to the federal court system. Once it's through the federal court system, will receive settlement from the United States. The second is the project management agreement. The draft environmental project management agreement was presented at the June 24 joint meeting referenced above. Commencement of that management agreement requires court approval of the consent decree and receipt of the funds from the United States. The management agreement anticipates that the Dragon Corporation will be the environmental engineer and consultant for design and implementation of the KDHE-approved remedy. Discussions have been ongoing between staff and the Dragon developing the agreement that we'll enter into for the remedial design. The city acted as the contracting agency on the previous remedial investigation and feasibility study, and that same process will carry forward on this agreement if we approve the project management agreement at a later date. The third process is the consent agreement in final order, which is easier to say CAFO. And staff and Stinson and Dragon continue to work on that document with KDHE. The CAFO will serve to document how the remedy is to be implemented with KDHE as the oversight group. The technical support Dragon continues to provide, the Salina public entities and Stinson, is on an attorney-client privileged basis. Dragon's efforts to advance remedial design work as quickly as possible continues to be critical to the three processes we just spoke of. The objective is eventually to transition to an agreement with Dragon to design and implement the remedy. Again, that can occur until the consent is approved by the court, and we receive funding from the United States, and the management agreement is filed with the Salina public entities. So that kind of brings us to our topic today, which the initial post-mediation work by Dragon on the remedial design was budgeted at $49,000. The city's one-fourth share was $12,500. And we anticipated that work would be completed by May 31 of 2020. And obviously, we're still continuing on with work. So the interest of the Salina public entities continues to be best served by Dragon's ongoing work to advance the remedial design. To continue Dragon's work through November of 2020, the estimated budget is $38,000, with the city's share being $9,500. The city's share of $12,250 for the initial work, combined with the $9,500 previously discussed, is $21,750, which exceeds the city manager's authority of $20,000. Something to note is the terms of the draft management agreement. And the final version, we anticipate that the Salina public entities will be reimbursed for expenses that follow the mediation process through the effective date of the consent agreement. And staff identified three options for the city commission's consideration. Option one is authorize the city manager to authorize Stinson to approve the estimated budget amount of $38,000, and the city's resulting one-fourth share of $9,500 for Dragon's work through November 2020. Option two is postpone consideration of the requested authorization to a specified time and provide staff direction. Option three is vote to deny the requested authorization, which would result in delay in the work towards development of the remedial design. Staff recommends option one. At this time, I'd be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
Unless I missed it, well, two questions. One, where does this money come from? And two, this money is going to be, will be reimbursed after the consent, after all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted?
That's the case, and we have an account that Ms. Pack pulls this money out of and makes these payment with the anticipation of being reimbursed probably towards the end of the year, I'm guessing.
So is this out of general fund or a special legal services fund, or...
I'm going to say special legal fund. That's what we've talked about, so Debbie agrees with that.
So that's one of our budgeted amounts for the year?
Yes.
Question, Commissioner Franz?
If I can restate what you just said in fewer words, what we've done is we have previously contracted with Dragon to do some of this post-mediation work.
Yes.
On the city manager's authority, because we thought it would be $12,500. That work is now, is continuing, and they have reached that point, and we need to now authorize an additional $8,900 or something like that, which brings it to above the manager's authority to approve the contract.
An additional total of $38,000. And the city's one-fourth share is $9,500, which exceeds the city manager's authority. And a lot of that has to do with where we're at with the process. We're still in the review with the Department of Justice, and I believe originally, we thought we'd be well past that at this point in time, but that has not occurred yet.
Yeah, that's the one point I did want to add. We anticipated that we would have the consent decree and the reimbursement, and this wouldn't be an expenditure that would have to be fronted. But since it is, and since the combination of the two exceeds $20,000, we felt it appropriate to bring it to you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. This is not a new contract in any sense of the word. It's simply a continuing work item.
An extension of the time to get to the point where we can have a management agreement with the funds available and the city overseeing that.
And I take it the other three entities have approved this, or will take it before their boards as necessary?
They've approved it. I don't know the process, but I believe we had the last ones.
Yes.
Okay, we're the last, okay. Okay, any other questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I would move that we authorize the city manager to authorize Stinson to approve the estimated budget amount of $38,000, and the city's resulting one-fourth share of $9,500 for Dragon's work through November 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to authorize Stinson to approve the estimated budget amount of $38,000, with city of Salina's one-fourth share being $9,500.
approve the estimated budget amount of $38,000 with city Salina's 1/4 share being $9,500. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 3-0. Okay, we have no development business. That will lead us to 9.1, the need for an executive session, and how long do we need on that?
Let's try 25 minutes.
Okay.
That didn't sound very confident.
That's my best guess.
Does anybody need a break, or are we okay to continue?
I can actually, I can always use a break, but I'm good.
Okay, okay, let's just keep on moving then, so.
All right. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of legal considerations relating to the potential engagement by the law firm of Clark, Meisen, Linville, as the city's legal counsel of a confidential, privileged expert in the course of providing legal advice to the city regarding a personnel matter under the city manager's purview. While relating to a personnel matter, the justification for the executive session is based upon legal considerations preliminary to future discussion of the personnel matter as it is ultimately defined, prompting the need for consultation with legal counsel which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at...
5:56.
5:56, thank you.
And I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for 25 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And there is a possibility of action when we return.
There is. We'll adjourn into Room 107B, we'll return into open session in this room, and there is the possibility of action to follow.
Okay. Okay, we are back in session. I would look to one of the commissioners for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Hoppick, I have moved that the law firm of Clark, Meisen, Linville as the city's legal counsel be authorized to engage an expert on a confidential, privileged basis, and that the city manager be authorized to reimburse the law firm of Clark, Meisen, Linville as the city's legal counsel for the actual cost of engaging the expert, all in the course of providing legal advice to the city regarding a personnel matter under the city manager's purview.
Second. We have a motion and a second that Clark, Meisen, Linville as the city's legal counsel engage an expert on a confidential, privileged basis, that the city manager be authorized to reimburse. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, aye.
All those opposed? That passes 3-0. Do we have any other business to bring before the Commission?
Not really, well, but just a loose comment. For the ongoing construction downtown on Santa Fe, I noticed the center lane, which was set up initially for deliveries, has become a kind of a regular staging ground for construction, as have a lot of the sidewalk parking spaces. I don't know how much of that could be moved to the back of the buildings.
Yeah.
Only on one occasion have I not been able to find a place to park, but I'm not down that much during the day. But is there any general directions being given to the construction crews?
There are. In fact, we've had a whole round of communication, boy, I want to say nine months ago, but I can revisit what's in place in terms of loading and unloading and the communication that went out, and we can distribute that again.
I know there's one company working, looks like on the sewer system, I mean, they had to be there just to what did, I understand that one, but there's just a lot of construction, I mean, there's a lot of construction going on, too, which is good, but...
With SDI's help, we've been able to coordinate in the past, and I'll go find that communication back and we'll rejuvenate it.
I have one point that's a question, I think I spoke to the city manager about it before. But when we did this last improvement to Santa Fe Avenue from, it's from Prescott to Walnut, where the hotel is, we inserted a four-lane corridor in between two three-lane segments that had bicycle lanes and parking on both sides. To me, that is, why didn't we just make it all three lanes with bicycle lanes and parking on both sides? It would seem that the, you know, some of those businesses along there, the medical community largely, might be able to use that additional parking. And every time you transition between a three-lane segment and a four-lane segment, there's a question of quite what to do. In other words, you come driving up and it doesn't occur to you that you're in the outside lane, and all of a sudden, you find yourself in a right-turn lane. I just don't know. To me, it would be a lot more consistent and probably safer from somebody just looking at it, just to have it three lanes all the way through.
How far south?
Pardon?
How far south?
Well, it would extend then from Kansas Wesleyan all the way through to, well, where the Leeloffs are, where the three-lane segment ends. But there's only that one, what, three-block segment in the center that is now four lanes. And of course, the bicycle designated routes don't branch off until you get to the hotel, so that, you know, I'm just saying, from my point of view, it just looks a little bit inconsistent as to why we mark that four lanes different from...
Admittedly so. I know staff actually kind of put that to the city commission at the time and solicited feedback from property owners along that segment, and that may be where we ended up, but we probably need to, it wouldn't hurt to revisit that.
One other reason, maybe, there's so much slowing down turn into the hospital and office building parking lot, that if that was the only lane, it would be a much slower egress through there.
Possibly, I don't know.
I'll follow up again, but I know that wasn't the topic.
It strikes me as being a little bit inconsistent as you travel that corridor from outside of that area, so.
Move we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 3-0. We'll see you guys next week.
I can stop my breathing under my breath every time I drive through that segment.